So we'll get started. Call this meeting to order. We do have a quorum. Everyone is here, all six members, including the chairman. As far as the chairman's report, I don't really have anything in particular. Does the vice vice chair have anything?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay, so we go on to public comment. Haley, do we have any public comment?
We do not have any public comment.
Not yet, anyway. Move on to the consent agenda. Which is approving the regular meeting minutes of last time. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we accept the minutes as written.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Paul second. Yes, that's fine.
Aye, okay. I think we have a vote of five to zero on that one, since I'm not supposed to be voting. Okay. Next, on our schedule is regular business and it's the discussion and consideration to amend the resources and infrastructure committee bylaws to change the regular meeting date and time. Which was brought up by Mr. Gray. Thank you. And I'm wondering if we should actually put dates and times in there, or should we put as determined by the calendar in January? By the committee in January?
Probably yes, determined by the committee in January, I would think. Does that work for everybody else?
Yes.
Okay. Haley, can you make that change so that the next meeting, we can go ahead and approve that change formally?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any, any other discussion needed on that one? Okay, next up is receive an update from all the ad hoc committees. First one is the water demand management and offset measures ad hoc committee. Do you have a report for us?
Go ahead, Tom.
No, I don't. We didn't meet, so I don't know what we, yeah, so I don't think we have any report.
Okay. I didn't think you would. Review the current U W M P ad hoc committee. I think we've got Ray or John is going to give us an update on where we are with the consultant a little bit later, and I think that's going to either kickoff or rejuvenate that committee. Water Conservation and Gray Water Use Ad Hoc Committee. I think that's Jim and
It's me.
Oh, yes, okay. Yeah, Brad, anything to report on that one?
No, I'll probably get moving on that this month. I was just recovering from my surgery still, so.
Yeah.
But it's all good now. I can hear you.
Good. Glad to hear that everything went fine with that. Good to have you back.
Thanks.
He's sign language.
The next one is also promotion, pardon me, produce informational videos on water meter reading and other topics ad hoc committee. Paul, are you reporting on that one or is Brad?
I can report on it. Brad and I haven't done anything since the last meeting, and that's, I would say, due to the circumstances that we're in as as kind of limiting communication, rest of that. So, so I think we're probably going to need to take some more video to be able to make a fuller product, and that may be something that we try to coordinate. You know, ad hoc between him and myself, you know, on the, on the side of things, but it certainly is something we haven't really addressed yet. So, so that's kind of where it's at. We're just sort of in a holding pattern.
Okay, good, good. I would say that I listened to the governor's report at noon today, which was informative as always, and, and he's seems to be leaning towards maybe getting out of this socializing maybe next month, sometime next month anyway. So maybe next month, we can actually meet in person, which would be nice.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay. All right. The next report comes from Research Offsite Water Storage Possibilities Ad Hoc Committee, and I'm gonna let Jim start this off, and then I think we can all chime in as, as we need to. But Jim, you want to give us a brief synopsis of what we did and where we are?
I'll do my best, and if you want more detail, I can read over some of the materials that were generated in our correspondence. In summary, what we did is set up a meeting with Supervisor Gibson and the subcommittee looking at this offsite or offstream storage concepts. Talked to him about it, and he was, I think, very helpful. I think he was you know, ready to go and talk about it and seemed enthused to talk about it in the future and to lend us a hand in trying to analyze any developments that occur. We then reached out to Tom Luster over at the Coastal Commission. And we basically presented him with the fact that we met with Gibson and talked about different storage possibilities and discussed with Luster the kind of summary conclusions we came to and looking at them, and I'd be happy to go over them in detail later if you wish. And so we asked Dr. Luster to give us his take on the synopsis we provided him, and he did. And that's kind of where we are today is we've got a response back from Dr. Luster. As an ad hoc committee, we haven't really had a chance to meet since that response and discuss it. But I'm sure we will, and from there we can decide what next steps might be beneficial for us to take.
Yeah, I think good synopsis. I think one of the things that came out of both our discussion with Supervisor Gibson and Tom Luster's reply was that we're kind of out here on our own, and we either have to make our own water or, or whatever, because neither one of them thought that getting water from Whale Rock, Nascimento, or anywhere else besides the immediate vicinity was not going to be an angle that we could, we could, we could go for.
Yeah, he painted a pretty bleak picture of the finances involved in pursuing any of those, what I would call long distance kind of alternatives or alternatives that frankly required a lot of pipe to be laid. I don't think he showed much interest there. I think to summarize his assessment of Cambria's water need, he viewed it as, as not quite having enough to do what CCSD seems to want to do, which is to try and unwind those waitlist positions and provide those people with intent to serve letters. So I think his assessment of our water situation is that we need a little bit more than we got. If it's, if we go into a really bad drought and we got a machine that'll make some water for us, and we've got, you know, possible other storage media that we can explore. But I think as Dave pointed out, we've, we're sort of at the end of the road as far as the district is concerned, and it didn't sound like a lot of, a lot of services were flocking in our direction.
Yeah, Paul, did you want to chime in or?
Um, I mean, I think that that, the, the piece, I don't know if I chime in a bit, I guess, I guess what I took away from hearing some of that was that we the quantity that we're trying to achieve is not a, like, let's say, build a massive project to accomplish, and if you're talking about doing a massive project, then you have to start to work on the economics to justify that. And, and we just haven't found really where those two, you know, actually meet and actually make any sense. So I, I agree that it sounds like we're, we're not looking for a quantity of water, if we're talking about additional water here, that you can really create a scalable solution that, that economically pans out, and so we're probably, we're, we need to optimize is what it feels like to me and come up with, with that, and that's, that's just my two cents to take away.
Just thought I'd mention one thing, and that is that Supervisor Gibson characterized the emergency water supply system as a water recycling system. And he also characterized discussions of the regional proposal for a wastewater treatment plant, potentially one that might be shared by San Simeon and Cambria as having a water recycling component to it.
Yeah.
Whatever it's worth.
Will.
I would like to say that one of the things that Jim brought up early on in our discussions, and that has been a recurring theme throughout, is that we really need to establish just exactly how much additional we might need. And the only way to do that is to find out exactly, you know, confirm the amount of water that the emergency water facility SWF can make. And I think, I think Supervisor Gibson and I think even Dr. Luster kind of intimated that that needed to be done before we could really say, okay, do we need to store a million acre feet or 50 acre feet, or what is the number that we need? And that really is a first step before we, we should go running off looking for a place to store the water. So, so that, you know, that, that seems to be the, the next step.
Yeah. I have a quick question about the letter. Is it, can it be, can it be included in the record now? Because I haven't seen it, Tom Luster's letter.
Yeah, we just got it the other day, so we didn't have a chance to get it into the meeting notes. I think, I think we got it like Friday or something like that.
That's one of the questions I was going to ask too, is if the ad hoc committee is going to share the letter with the rest of the RNI committee. But the other thing is too, when you're talking about extra water, we have to remember that according to the DWR, 799 acre feet is all we were permitted to take out of the San Simeon wells, whether the facility is running or not. Need to remember that. So we're not talking about being able to run the plant to get extra water above that 799, because that's all we're allowed to take out. Unless somebody does something with relicensing.
Yeah, I think we're, we were aware of that. We were just you know, trying to look at how much water we actually use during a year, and we're, we're down around 500 and maybe five and a quarter acre feet a year, and we were just trying to figure out how much does this emergency water machine provide on top of that? And there are some preliminary test results from both the first tracer test and the second tracer test that theoretically calculate a yield based on the percentage of the tracer material they found in, in the wells they sampled. But the, the question is really, you know, since the the setup of the current water system is one of several that were proposed by CDM Smith. And the one we ended up with, the final one, is, is one of a couple which had injection wells in different places. But they ran into problems trying to locate them there. So the, so it, in our discussions with, with Luster and Gibson, Gibson's first question is, well, you want to talk about offsite storage? How much do you want to store? And that's turns out to be a pretty tough question to answer. And, and then with Dr. Luster, pretty much the same kind of thing, how much water are you looking to store? And assumptions about how much you need to store are predicated on how much can you make on top of whatever we're provided by rainfall during a year? And so that aspect of the conversation remains somewhat up in the air.
Yes.
Yeah, question. Did Tom Luster do any, discuss at all the concept of, I think he called it roughing or, or roughing the, the watersheds, in other words, storage or slowing down of the flow in either San Simeon or San Simeon Creek, which would amplify the water that's in the aquifer?
Yeah, he did mention it, and we talked a little bit about, I think George Kendall up on
George Kendall, right.
Santa Rosa Creek is doing a small pilot project there. Again, it, you know, this, this was mentioned along with other alternatives, but the question of how much water are you trying to return to the creek is kind of predicated on how much water you're trying to pull out of the creek later on, or out of the aquifer. And that proves somewhat difficult to analyze.
Okay, so we, we will share Dr. Luster's memo back to the ad hoc committee. Jim, can you send that to Haley and Haley will send it out?
I sure will.
To everybody else. And basically, what we'll do is, is, is we'll let you digest that, and we'll have another meeting here in a week or two, and then we'll report again back to you on the results of that meeting at our, our next full RNI meeting. And Jim and Paul, I'll set up a meeting for us probably late next week, maybe. How's that sound? Yeah.
Good.
All right. Haley, do we have any, any comment?
No public comment at this time.
Hey, thank you. All right, well, let's, let's then move along to our next area, which is to receive a progress report on the investment grade audit, the IGA. General Manager Wygold, can you give us a kind of an update as to where PG&E stands with this kind of delay we're seeing here? Are they also delaying their progress?
No, we're actually, we're actually basically on track. They, they had a team out to go through the plant, some of the locations already. And we may see a, a change in the, the first update meeting, but, but other than that, we're, we're on we're on track. Ray just fell off, his internet went down, so he's dialing back in in case he has something to add.
Okay. Any other questions on the IGA for the general manager while we wait for Ray to get back in? There's Ray.
Right here.
You should be on by telephone. You there, Ray?
Yeah, no, I, I went ahead and rebooted my, my wifi, so it should be good.
Okay, so I was just giving an update on the IGA, basically that PG&E had already come out, done a first pass, but if you wanted to add anything on it.
Yeah, yeah, a couple of good takeaways from it. We we, we prioritize the, 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 the energy conservation measures. And we had a really good conversation with PG&E about the, the high priority for the three wire to four wire upgrade. And the good news with that is it's moving forward. Our application is officially in. We, we, we got our project classified as what's called a betterment, so meaning that the district doesn't have to pay for, for the, the, the four wire upgrades. We just have to pay for, you know, a new transformer pad if need be, and any kind of conduit that needs to be connected from the transformer to our panel. So all of that is moving forward. The engineering is, is moving forward. We had, like, when John, I think, mentioned that we had a couple of good tours, we, we limited to small groups because of the social distancing, but, but two groups of people came in, one that was focused on actual conservation or, and actual energy savings, and then the other one was regarding plant upgrades. And we got some really good results from that. We're hoping to repurpose some of the existing tanks that we have for the equalization and for the sludge processing, so hopefully we could do that, and, and it looks like it's, it's pretty promising. So, yeah, that's, the engineering is moving forward and as, as was hopefully already reiterated, the projects won't be moving forward until, and that, that's going to be the next phase of this, but right now engineering is still moving forward.
Okay, great, great. Does that mean the engineering on the other aspects of that, like the generator and generator set that's going to be needed? And, and that kind of thing, is that all moving as a odd along the way?
Yeah, that's all moving forward too, yes.
Okay, great. Super. That's really good news.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, I'm, I'm really glad to hear the application is in for the four wire upgrade. When we had our kickoff meeting, I think they said something about it could be taking up to a year before we could actually get that done because of the waiting list. Is that still the projection? Is it going to take that long for our application to be approved and for the four wire system to be able to be put in?
No, it's going to be, I, I think it's going to be quicker than that. Right now, because it's just, it's just a matter of getting the, the engineering done, and we should be able to move forward with that in the next three months, three to six months.
All right, so we're going to have to get PG&E's approval on the application. We're going to have to get engineering done, then we're going to have to find the money, right Pam? And then we're going to have to, you know, get approval to go ahead with the project, which is probably going to be $304,000 total, as I recall. Is that about right, Ray?
Yeah, something in that neighborhood.
Okay. All right, and I think we've got that money in, coming in the budget, so that's something that we may need to make sure that the 2020, 2021 budget has a figure in there to, to move ahead with at least that portion of, of the of the IGA. All right, any other questions, comments on the IGA? All right. The next item on our agenda is to receive a report from Mr. Nezio on the Orange County Facility Tour. So Ray, you're up again.
Yeah, we had a, we had a good tour. It happened right around the time, I think March 10th was when it was, like, before all the COVID issues starting to ramp up, but we were able to get a private tour, because that day, we, they actually canceled the group tour, but, but our tour was private. We got a, a chance to, to meet with the, the director of operations that they had there. And we had a really good time asking the questions that we had, and even the curiosities that we had. A scheduled two hour tour that we had actually went a little over two and a half, so he was very generous in spending some time with us. The people that went was myself and Jim Green and Melissa and, and Paul and his wife. And, no, they had a good time. The, the system that they have is very similar to ours, except that they have an existing 100 million gallon per day operations, and they, they plan to expand it to 130 million gallons per day in the next couple of years here. But, yeah, everything is pretty similar, except at a larger scale. The, the technology is, it's almost exactly the same, the even the, the filters that they use is, is exact same as ours, except that they have a whole bunch of them. And, um, and 100 million gallons per day, their, their total project cost was, you know, right around 480 million all, all told, and their, their yearly operation and maintenance budget is right around 34 million. So typically a significantly larger scale than us, but some of the good takeaways that I got from it regarding the, the tour and how they do things is to have a really good educational program, a lot of good visuals. I love that they had different color of water and after each treatment stage. I thought that was really helpful, is, is a good visual. They had a lot of good maps about just the maps of the plant itself and where they actually dispose of the water that they part of it, they dispose for sea water intrusion barrier, and another part of it goes, the, the most of it goes to the recharge basins up in Anaheim, which is about 11 miles away. And they also had like really cool exhibits that are pretty hands on, like they have cutaways of filters, they have really good visuals that are, are interactive, like you can push a button, and then these different contaminants would light up as the, the kind of things that they treat. And they also have some really good brochures that explain the project really well and and just, you know, give, it, it gives a really good picture of, of the technology and, and it goes and explains it in very really good detail, and, and yet it's very easy to follow and understand. So, so that's, that's one takeaway. They got another takeaway that I got are, are all of the tours are done in-house, by in-house staff. I, I, I wholeheartedly agree with things like that, because it's, it's really important that, that the actual staff that runs the plant are the same ones that, that do the tour. Because most of, a lot of these places, they, they farm it out, they, they actually hire a consultant to do the tours for them, but this particular plant does it themselves. And I, I think that's definitely something we would do here as well, and, and that was really cool. And another takeaway that I got which was kind of cool was they have a really cool research test lab that basically a smaller scale of the, the plant itself, but, but it, but it allows for, for different technologies to be used before they use it large scale and, and gives opportunity for, for different research, to try different things for their plant. So, so those are the kind of things that are takeaways that, that I saw a lot of the things that we could definitely implement here. And, yeah, I'm looking forward to that. That's kind of like the whole takeaway was the technologies that are similar and the, the permitting issues that they run into and operational issues that they run into. And and I definitely think we can do a lot of that here to have a really cool educational program.
Good, like the idea, yes. DMY Gold, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I was just going to point out also is that team of ours that went down, they're also created some new relationships with the team, operational team there, so it gives us an ability not necessarily just going back to the manufacturer of our system, but actually going to other operators that are using the same plant and same equipment.
Good. Tom?
Yeah, Ray, thank you for the report. Did you learn anything or have any discussion of interest about the RO concentrate disposal and how they do it and how we might learn from that? Because I understand it's an ocean outfall, but, and the RO concentrate would probably be somewhat different from ours.
Yeah, no, they, they do have an ocean outfall. The I think like the concentrate is very similar to, to what we would have for us. The interesting thing about The interesting thing about it, they do have an ocean outfall and they, uh, part of, uh, their permitting is that they actually do marine monitoring of, of the, of their outfall site, because it goes out about, about five miles away from the, the shore. So, um, yeah, pretty significant outfall and they run the whole thing. They don't have a situation where they're only running it part of the year. They're running it all year long. Uh, the only time that they run it, they, they, is when they do any kind of maintenance on it. So, but they run it all the time.
That, that takes, that gets sewage, oh, sorry, one for, one more, one more question. It takes treated, secondarily treated waste, right? Or is it, is there a tertiary phase before it takes it?
Yeah, the, the, the water that they get comes from the ocean, the, the, the Orange County sanitation district, which is right next door to them. And they treat it to tertiary, to tertiary before. And so they, they actually get really good high quality effluent that they treat.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Paul, you went, um, you wanted to wish your, your, your aspect?
Well, I, I, I think Ray did a great job of, of summarizing most of it. Um, some of the key takeaways or differences that I think might be worth adding is that outfall and the difference in the fact that, um, that the plant is coincidentally, and it's not coincidentally, it's, it's five miles inland. And it's because of the fact that they have to, they have to get past Coastal Commission with that. Um, the other part of it that I just would share as a personal story is my granddad actually worked for the Army Corps of Engineers back in the nineteen fifties and sixties to help put that scrubbing system in place, uh, for the San, San Ana River. And, uh, and so the, the mechanics of what they have is a lot more robust and it's, and what I, what I would say is almost like they have a, they have a water treatment plant that's intended to work with pre-existing infrastructure. We've kind of, we're kind of hitting this from a, a different angle in the sense that we've got a water treatment plant and not a whole lot of infrastructure to put this, uh, this, this output into, if that makes any sense. So, um, and what I mean by that is, is twenty miles upriver on the San Ana River, uh, there's millions upon millions of dollars worth of already existing places to help this water kind of find its way into the ground, uh, that with, that we, I don't know that we have quite an option for, uh, to, to get, to get to that. And I, I realize that we're dealing with different scales, but that's, uh, that's, I guess, one of the biggest takeaways is differences that I saw for, for us. So, so it's, um, the, uh, the other piece that I would say, um, is, is I do, I do think that there might be an opportunity if, if we're talking about that they do have this smaller scale plant there. Uh, if we're trying to figure out ways that we can, we can take, you know, and, you know, a system like we have and, and, you know, run some numbers and see how it actually applies. They may be a huge asset for us to be able to outsource some of that to without having to, to do models or whatever else not. We may be able to actually just buy time with their plant or whatever to, to, to see if there's, there's a way to do that. And that, that might be worth, worthwhile checking out, but um, yeah, I, I, I think, I mean, they have quite a facility. It's, you know, really impressive to, to be honest with you. I mean, I, the, I described it online as, as they've got more stainless steel pipe. They've got more invested in stainless steel pipe than will probably ever have an infrastructure, if that makes any sense. So it's, uh, they've just got quite a, a larger scale scenario than what we've got.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Really good. Anyone else? Questions for Ray, Paul, anybody?
I'm sorry I didn't get to go see it, but thank you, Paul, for bringing me back that awesome pen.
Oh, yeah. And I also wanted to say shout out to Ray. I mean, we did this literally, I think, on the last day that before like they shut the state down. So it was, uh, it was certainly a lot of people making their best college effort to get out there and, and, uh, and be part of that. So I, I appreciated everybody making that happen. So, because otherwise we probably wouldn't have that to talk about today. So it's nice to have it.
Okay, very good, very good.
Thank you, Ray.
All right, Haley, any, um, uh, commenting from, from the community yet?
There is no public comment at this time.
Thank you. All right. Next item we have on our list is the discussion and consideration regarding reviewing and revising the CIP list and forwarding to the board of directors. Uh, that was attached. Vice Chair Dean, do you want to kind of review what we've done with that? And I think it's about done, right?
Yeah, I think it looks great. So what they did was they went ahead and added back in the things that were done in the last fiscal year, along with what the projected, the estimate cost was and what the final cost ended up being. And that's really where I was, what I was pushing for. And the way it was integrated into the list, I think is perfect. I think they did a fantastic job. I'm happy.
All right. Anybody else got any, um, questions on that one or commented, or comment they want to make? No? Okay. Um, so Vice Chair Dean is going to take that to the meeting. I'm give that as part of the report on Thursday. Uh, and then the next uh, live meeting that the Board of Directors has, we'll go ahead and have those big sheets made up again so that we can have those at the meeting, so that the public can all see the list and how we're making progress on the list. I think we are making progress and it's, and it's pretty good progress. So I'm pretty pleased with what they've given us.
Do we need to have a motion to forward this to the board or am I just supposed to give this in my report?
Uh, I don't know. Do you want a motion? We can have a motion if you want.
I second.
Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. unanimous, five to nothing. Very good. Thank you. All right. Next item on our list is the, um, receive an update on the urban water management plan consultant. Let's have General Manager Ygold kick this one off.
I was gonna have Ray start it and then, uh, I'll, I'll add in about our way forward.
Okay. Okay, yeah. So we, we received one proposal for the, the, uh, well, urban water management plan slash CDP project and, um, uh, we reviewed, it was from WSC and we reviewed the, the, um, the contract that they got. Normally, if he would, if he were to get one, it would be, um, you know, it would, it would be a dis- a concern if we didn't get a good, a proposal, but the proposal that Water System Consult-
Big frowning face.
He's, yeah, he's frozen.
Yeah. He lost, he lost his internet again. John?
We got a movement.
Oh, there he is.
Okay. Oh, man. All right.
All right.
So, um, we got, um, so WSC was the consultant that, uh, did on the project. And we, we looked at their, their proposal and we looked at their qualifications. And we, we believe that they are, uh, well qualified to do the project, uh, both aspects of it. And what we did was, uh, we asked them to break up their cost proposal to, uh, to parse out some of the things that belong to the UWMP and some of the things that belong to, uh, the coastal development permit portion relating to, um, the SWF. Uh, understand though, with, with the understanding that some parts of the U, of the UWMP have, uh, have, um, analysis that are helpful, that are coming from the, the sustainable water facility. That's why it's tied together. The, the UWMP and the CDP are tied together in that sense. So what, what we're hoping to propose, um, well, in a nutshell, the budget was way higher. The, the, the cost proposal was a lot higher than what we had budgeted for, um, in the neighborhood of a hundred fifty thousand. Um, and for, for this year, we had budgeted thirty thousand for the UWMP. So we would need to, to go back and, and, um, see where we can get money for this. And, uh, that's going to be the next step forward. And I'm hoping that we can schedule a, a special RNI meeting to discuss this in more detail specifically.
Okay. Whenever you guys are ready. I saw, uh, Ms. Duffield turn around. She's interested. We, you mentioned money again, Pam. So would you like to chime in here?
Well, our intent is to take this to finance as well. So we're thinking maybe a special meeting before we meet with finance again. And then we can wrap it all into the third quarter report. If there's a budget adjustment or anything that we need to do, you know, we can kind of package it all together at that point.
Okay. Now, I, I doubt that these guys are going to spend all this money in, in this fiscal year. Can we sign an agreement and, and still keep the budget at thirty thousand and, and, or something like that? And then, uh, budget the rest of it for next year?
Well, generally with contracts, you want to, when you engage in the contract, you need your budget all inclusive at that point.
Okay.
So, and then at year end, what we've, what we did for the first time last year is we took all of those encumbered contracts and anything that was not spent, if you recall, we reserved them for encumbrance and moved the budget into the next fiscal year.
Okay. Good. Um, Mr. Ygold?
I was just gonna add in what's, what sort of, we, we had great intentions going into this to bundle both projects in in one consulting firm because of, because of the, um, the issues that Ray outlined there. But what's really, we made ourselves, gave ourselves a little bit of a bureaucratic paperwork nightmare because in this last audit that we just completed, uh, we capitalized the SWL plant. And under the rules of that, any services, which are generally not a capital item, under SWF are a capital item. But, uh, because we saved so much money on the Baker tanks, we got some space in there to fit the CDP oriented costs into the capital. But to go through that, we have to have a special meeting with RNI. Then that gets for recommendation of, of doing that and then passed and then Finance Committee takes it. And Ray makes the recommendation to the board for that capital allocation, reallocation. So that's the CDP part. The, uh, urban water management plan is also, we apparently last year, we under budgeted, uh, an awful lot. But Ray and Pam are going to get together to look at what we can move around in this year's budget. Uh, especially since we're already putting off some projects, um, because of the virus, we think we're going to have some room in there. So, uh, they're, they're going to meet here to, um, see what kind of space we can make for that. Ray's already also met to, to cull down the, the price and the cost. So we, we think we're in pretty decent shape overall.
Okay, Jim?
Sorry, just moved my computer.
Okay. Anybody else have a comment, um, you want to make? So when, so you're asking us to have a special meeting prior to the Finance Committee, next Finance Committee meeting, which is in next month, right?
No.
At the end of the month.
The twenty eighth.
They're on the twenty eighth. So when do you want us to have a special meeting?
It would have to be the week before.
Yeah, which is next week. So the week of the twentieth, Monday is the twentieth and then go through. Everybody look at their calendars and make sure that they're available.
I'm just sitting home soaking.
Really busy people these days, but, uh,
I've been busy. I don't know what you guys are talking about.
Something like, something like next Thursday. Is that going to work or is that?
What's on next Thursday?
Twenty-third?
Twenty-third?
Is there, is there a board, uh, board director's meeting?
No.
Okay.
I can do, I can do before, yeah, like the twenty-third, I can do before ten AM. And then I have, I have a pretty busy day that day. And I, I work remotely. I'm not trying to be difficult or, and.
I understand. Uh, how about the twenty-second then?
Uh, I can, I can do all day the twenty-second, pretty much. I, I can move things around that day.
All right. It's Wednesday the twenty-second.
That's fine for me.
Everybody's good?
Perfect.
Okay, Haley? Uh, it's two o'clock. It's two o'clock. A good time for everybody?
Two o'clock, great.
Two o'clock on the twenty-second, we'll have a special meeting and it will be to discuss the UWMP consultant and CDP consultant contracts, right? And we could also put on that agenda, another report from the, uh, all-site storage ad hoc, and I'll try to squeeze our meeting in, uh, before that. And we'll have Mr. Luster's, uh, letter, uh, or email reply included in the, uh, included in that meeting summary. So, uh, I'll, I'll send you guys a meeting invite, uh, maybe for Monday or Tuesday of next week then. What day is good for you next, prior to that, Paul? Monday or Tuesday?
Uh, I, yeah, let me see.
Or either?
That, that'll be fine too. Either one of those is fine.
Okay.
I did, it was really just that day, honestly, that I got kind of blocked out with someone.
All right. Jim, you're okay? You're not going fishing?
I wish I was, but I'm not. I've got a doctor's appointment, uh, on Tuesday morning, nine o'clock.
Okay. Okay. So I'll try to make it Monday, um, uh, afternoon, early afternoon. All right. Made myself a note. Thank you. All right. And we all, I think we have to have a motion, I think, to, to, uh, have this special meeting put on the calendar. So do I hear a motion out there to to make this special meeting happen on the twenty-second at two o'clock?
Okay, so move.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Uh, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right. Five to zero again. Thank you very much.
Can we also get, sorry. Can we also get an update on where we are with the CDP and the project description?
At that meeting?
At some point.
Okay. We can't do it today, obviously, because it's not on the agenda.
Yeah. Can we put it on the agenda for next time?
Um, well, you're going to get that at the, the, um, board meeting on Thursday. So I'm not sure that we're going to need.
That works. That works.
Yeah, the board meeting on Thursday has it on the agenda. So you'll go, you'll get an update on that then.
Okay.
I think that's, I think that's the best place to get that.
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We're down to our last, uh, regular business item, which is receive an update on the conservation program efforts. And I guess Ray, this is probably you again.
Yeah, so, um, so, as, as, as most of you know, we, we went, we moved forward then with the flume project, which is that, um, that meter rebate, uh, that meter measurement rebate. When the emails went out to introduce the program to people, um, all fifty units got sold out uh, within a week. So, uh, so we're hoping to get some, the, the second part of that, of those meters when hopefully we get the grant, um, approved, which we'll find out hopefully pretty soon here.
Yeah, I thought we were supposed to get information on that grant by the end of March.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, we still haven't heard word from it. But, um, yeah, I hope, yeah, hopefully sometime soon here. And we're also moving forward with, uh, with inputting the data, uh, populating the database that, uh, that we talked about with, uh, with coastal and, and I made some tweaks to it. And so we're starting to populate that. Right now, we're, we're, we've suspended, um, uh, some, uh, some, some home inspections due to COVID. Um, but there are case by case basis, like if there's no one at the house. Uh, so there's, there, if there's a situation like that, we would allow it. But right now we've suspended, um, inspections for retrofit. But that's where we're at on our water conservation efforts.
Have you got a target for when you'll have the database complete?
Um, hopefully by, uh, I'm going to guess by the end of the summer.
Okay. Any other questions on this item for Mr. Denizio?
Do you mind if we go back, I, I forgot to mention something about the, oh, the, the Orange County Tour, and I think it might be applicable to a couple other places here, I don't know if it's now is the time, but, um, basically what it is, is that, uh, it, I asked IS Mahol, who's the, the Executive Director of that plant, they've got all these different parts, right? They've got, you know, basically places to put the water, they've got ways to purify the water, they've got ways to discharge it. And what was, you know, you're trying to organize all that, what was the actual benchmark that they were going for? What was the, what was the, you know, what was the qualifier for, is this a good idea or not? And cost per acre foot was basically just the hard line, this is what, this is what we were trying to accomplish. And, and so I guess, I guess what I'm saying is whatever we're doing in this whole thing, we need to keep that in mind as, as we're trying to beat well water right now, um, with cost per acre foot and a lot of aspect is, is, you know, the, the well water's limited. Uh, so that's, that's a, a detractor for it, but at the end of the day, it's gonna be very difficult to approve something that's gonna beat well water when you talk about the economics of it, and so that's, that's just something I, I think is worthwhile mentioning right now.
Okay. Anyone else, uh, back on, uh, the topic? Okay, so, uh, that concludes regular business and, um, I now am open for discussion on future agenda items. Before we adjourn, um, we have a special meeting set up, but, but, um, anybody have anything that they wanna make sure is on our next regular meeting, which is scheduled for the uh, eleventh of May? At this time? No, seeing nothing? Alright, very good, thank you, um, I hereby, uh, adjourned the meeting. Thanks, everybody, appreciate you.
Thank you, David.
If anybody needs any fabric masks, let me know, I'm making them.
Thanks, Karen.